Certainly bring it up again. All right, so we'll call the meeting to order for May 22nd. First order of business is approval of the May 15th minutes. I think we're gonna have to table that because I would assume you'd want to abstain from that one.
I will.
So we will table. Is there community input this evening? Yes?
I've got a question on the Pinch Hill. Was that culvert the one that was gonna be put in later that got put in by the T?
I don't know. Suzanne was going to ask the question. I don't know if she did.
What culvert's that?
The one on Pinch Hill.
On Pinch Hill.
The culverts that are there are there now.
Yeah, wasn't one that we were gonna, they were gonna hold off on until later?
Across from the Jaloberts property.
Across from the Jaloberts, yeah. We didn't put that one in.
We didn't do it.
No, they're talking about the one by the T that's a driveway culvert.
Yeah, the farm, when we dug that one out, the farmer, actually, the farmer, I forget his name, Phil, actually wanted it. So he asked us to put it up on the property. He was gonna use it someplace else on the farm. We were gonna haul it off. Is that what you're talking about?
No, you put in a culvert or a driveway.
Yeah, we put a culvert in. There's one, we actually put one culvert in on Pinch Hill. And that's the one that they use to enter the field by the, where they store their manure.
Okay.
Any other?
So we put in a driveway culvert.
We did, and that was part of the bid.
That was part of the plan all along.
That was part of the whole plan.
That we had about.
Yes.
Well, my question is, is the first good frost heave and that thing's gonna heave right out of the ground 'cause it's not very deep.
Got 12 inches of cover on it.
Any other questions or comments this evening? Seeing none, we're gonna get on to Department head business. First, the building inspector. He is not here this evening, but he has, is monitoring the activity on Church/Washington Street that was brought to our attention. I've also been by. It looks like they are just removing debris from the building, but we are monitoring it. 39 Rollins Road. Mr. Clark has reviewed it, and they do indeed need a building permit. I didn't notice if there's one in there or not. It was a driveway paving. Minimum housing standard ordinance is tabled until Suzanne arrives. I'm working off the wrong check I called out. Tell them she comes back. Health inspector's not here. We don't have anything for him. I think bed bugs is still on the agenda, but it's not on the, hasn't made it under the project agenda. Fire department doesn't seem to be here this evening. Highway department?
PD wanna go before?
No.
You have a non-public that you want to do?
I do have a non-public.
Would you like to go, chief?
I can't, but.
Unless you have one too.
I do, actually. Continuation from last week.
All right, what, we'll just go in alphabetical order then? Okay, so the highway department. The only thing that you have, do you have anything else for us?
I have a couple purchase orders.
All right, we'll have to bring them forward.
Yeah, it's gonna be purchase order 955 to Pike Industries. We're gonna haul some gravel into Vicentennial Park. All we could do would be actually summing 350 bucks. Just gonna add my gravel account.
Purchase order 955 to Pike, or gravel, uh, you have a gravel. Vicentennial Park for three hundred foot gallons.
So this is the yearly?
Yeah, just to kind of.
Bill and E., the beginning part of the. We don't maintain it.
We don't maintain it. We just haul it in and.
And one of the residents who lives on that road actually maintains it. It's a longstanding, it arranges for the town. Any other discussion on purchase orders 955? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye opposed? Passed unanimously. What else do you have for us, Jeff?
Purchase order 954 to City of Dover. It was worked on, it was done on the one, um, seventy-one twenty-three.
Purchase, move fix that purchase order 954 to City of Dover for seventy-one dollars and twenty-three cents. Those questions?
Worked on the five. Okay, so work, so second, sorry.
So what?
We had electrical issues this winter. With the sand up out of it was shorting out, so.
Okay.
They were.
But you were able to, like, this didn't just happen?
No, no, this was, this was back like January. We just, we just received a bill.
Okay.
This coming out of vehicle maintenance?
Yes.
Any other questions on purchase order number 954? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? All right, passed unanimously. What else do you have for us, Jeff?
So 953 to Airgas, and it's for our yearly renewal of our cylinders, our oxygen, our acetylene, and our argon for a hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Move fix that purchase order 953 to Airgas for renewal of contract for one air gun take, one acetone take?
Acetylene.
Acetylene.
Thank you. And one oxygen tank for a hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Second, I only know that 'cause of welding it. Okay, any other questions or comments on purchase order number 953? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye opposed?
And last one, at least, 952 to Fastenall for the sum of sixty-nine dollars and nineteen cents. And it's for bolts and nuts for the plow that was, had damage down to it this winter.
Uh, move fix, move fix that purchase order 952 to Fastenall for bolts for the plow for sixty-nine dollars and nineteen cents.
Second, this is for the plow that we were rebuilding?
Yes, yeah.
Perfect, okay. Any other questions or comments on purchase order number 952?
No.
All those in favor? Aye opposed? All right, passed unanimously. Do you have anything else for us, Jeff?
That's it.
How are we progressing on, do you wanna go or?
Okay.
How are we progressing on, on Boundary and Pinch Hill?
Boundary Street has its binder down. They're coming back Wednesday to start raising the structures and start to form the swale. Pinch Hill has the binder down. Intersection has been reconfigured. We're scheduled for top June 1st and June 2nd. That's the pace of the top. And the project will be complete shortly after that.
Great. And transfer station?
Still working on dates on that.
Okay.
It's more to do with the wall than anything. Because I have to, I told them like the week that we're shut down, like, that's one that has to be done. So they're trying to coordinate and get everything with the wall and everything.
But it's moving along.
Yes.
Anything else for us before we go to non-public?
Nope.
Is it a personnel issue?
It is.
Okay, I'm moving over to non, actually you probably should do it.
No, you always do it. Does it matter? Okay. Move to going to non-public for personnel issue.
Second, those in favor, Jody?
Aye.
Mike? Aye, we are non-public. Time was going faster. Okay, so anything else in the highway department?
So I'll just go plus five.
I'm good. Does the board have anything to mention?
No, I think we're good. Thanks, you have a great night.
Thank you.
The police department is, oh.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Couple purchase orders. First one is number 1204. To reverse myself of our postage, my item number 230. Last week I purchased two rolls of stamps. We could send out the Silver Street, Silver Lane residential survey. It was actually double stamped because we sent them as self-addressed stamp. Then we'll have to return the surveys to us, so. Ninety-eight dollars.
Move fix that purchase order 1204 to Robert Ducharme for ninety-eight dollars for stamp, for 200 stamps.
Second, any discussion on purchase order number 1204? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passed unanimously. What else do you have?
Okay, purchase order number 1205 made out to Rogers Auto Body. The cruiser number is 74, which is the 2014 Ford Explorer. Both the front doors, the vinyl covering is pulling away from the top part where the window goes down into the well. So they seem to re-glue it. So that's 240 dollars. That's line item 707 on a vehicle repairs.
Move fix that purchase order 1205 to Rogers Auto Body for auto repair of interior windows for 240 dollars.
Second, any discussion of purchase order number 1205? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passed unanimously.
Purchase number 1207 has 28 communications. Line item 287 radio repair account. We've got two blue lights that are on the Cruiser 72, which is a 2010 Ford Explorer that are out. I salvaged two blue lights from upstairs that we had. They're from a prior vehicle. So we're just gonna swap them out. And we're gonna change our laptop mounts from the 72 and put that in a new car, the 71. So I estimate that's gonna be no more than 200 dollars. And that'll be, again, line item 287 radio repair.
Move fix that purchase order 1207 to 28 communication for multiple repairs of radios for 200 dollars.
Second, any discussion of purchase order 1207? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right.
Okay, in the last item, last summer, we applied to get a grant from Homeland Security for two laptops, two monitors, and the printer for the EOC downstairs. That was approved last fall, but we finally decided now's the time to go purchase the items. So I got purchase number 1206 made out to Staples. It was to come out of the town reimbursement account. Two Dell laptop computers, 359 dollars and 99 cents each for a total of 71998. Two 27-inch LED monitors for 29998 total. And one HP Office Jet Pro printer for 12999. For a total amount of 1,149 dollars and 95 cents. Out there, we receive from Homeland Security the entire amount, 1,149 dollars and 95 cents because our matching part was participating in the exercise that we did last year with Homeland Security.
Move fix that purchase order 1206 to Staples for two Dell laptop computers, two LED monitors, one printer for a total of 1,149 dollars and 95 cents.
Second, any discussion of purchase order number 1206? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None? All right.
That's all that I have for the public portion. Unless you have something for me.
I do. The truck on South Street seems to have not moved in the last two weeks.
It has not. I noticed it there again today. We have gone for that house lease probably half a dozen times trying to roust somebody. And every time, no one's answering the door.
Okay.
So I think our next step is to actually put a letter on the windshield saying, move it or lose it. Perfect thing, so.
Okay.
We'll take care of that tomorrow.
Works for me. Anything else for the public portion of the meeting?
Oh, Wendy, thank you for the donation to the rec department.
All right, if there isn't anything else for the public portion, motion to go into non-public? Is it non-public for personnel?
Personnel issues, yes.
Motion to go into non-public for personnel issues?
Second.
Seven, ten, quarter of my career.
That's all that I have for you folks. Anything tonight?
Yeah.
No. All right, thank you. Good night.
Good night.
All right, I believe I saw the fire department come in.
I did.
Come on up, chief, sorry.
Come on up, Kayla. No, I'm not, I'm sorry. I have no non-public stuffs on there.
Oh, shit.
You don't, we're not gonna try fetting tonight? I think we're very happy with that. Thank you, we appreciate it.
Well, on five years, I haven't had to go that way. I have one purchase order, and it kinda concerns the, you know, woman sitting next to me. I don't know if you know her, this is Kayla Reno. Her father was on the fire department. She's a grandfather, long, long time ago. But the reason why Kayla's here tonight is she completed her emergency medical technician advanced class.
Awesome.
Excellent.
So that's like the next step. And her next step would be paramedic, if that's what she wishes to pursue.
Outstanding.
And she's also a member of the Arcane unit staff. She's been employed there how long, a couple of months now?
That's great. You have someone from our staff on your staff. That's a good thing.
It is a very good thing.
Thank you for that, too. Congratulations.
Yeah, it's a very good thing. Because when I, you know, me digging something or talking to Brian over there, I can kind of run it through Kayla because I know she's gonna see him on a regular basis sometimes. I see him an awful lot anyway. But the reason why I have her here is, one thing that we do with the fire department, when she took her training, we reimburse them for half of it once they show that they got the certificate. So I have purchase order number 1137. And it is to reimbursement for Kayla Reno for her completion on her advanced EMT. I just wanted to bring her in so you could see.
We would've gotten either, even if you weren't here.
At least, at least a member. Yeah, see a member of the fire department.
It's nice to hear you coming, thank you.
Thank you. Michael, can you?
We can take a picture.
What, there's other pictures here from somewhere the other guys?
Someone will take a picture, put it on if you want. Sure, that's what I mean. I can, yeah.
I don't know how many hours it is, but it's an enormous amount of hours in the level that she's a chief here. And now she's putting her skills to work on both sides. Of course, with the fire department in on the.
I think all of you.
We will, yeah. Let's pay her first, so then we'll do it outside.
All right. Move fix that purchase order 1137 to Kayla Reno for reimbursement for advanced EMT, 600 dollars.
Second, any discussion of purchase order 1137? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That's unanimous. Congratulations, Kayla. Let me sign this first, and I think maybe we will do a picture. Always nice to be able to honor one of our.
Kind to expand on that a little bit, starting tomorrow night. You wanna hand the certificate?
Well, the chief handing her a certificate, how's that? We'll stand on either side.
Please, let's take a picture of that.
There you go.
All right, let's. You could've worn this, if I wouldn't have worn a sweatshirt and jeans. We thought it would be a quick meeting tonight. We wouldn't need to be, come on up.
From the middle up.
Exactly.
That's all we gotta do.
All right, you hand her a certificate. You stand in the middle, I'll give her a certificate. We'll stand on either side. All right.
There you go, Kayla. There you go, we hold someone tight on, fully.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you for doing that.
Appreciate it. Well, Kayla's one of our studious and one of our more dependable employees there, so.
How long have you been with the fire department, Kayla?
2010. I started as an explorer.
Uh-huh, oh, even better. That's great.
Yep, she's worked her way up through.
Well, it's great that that program has, has brought in a number of people that have started to stay, right? That's great.
It's been a great period to us. And she was a summer's tour student. She went through the Level One CTC class that I instruct, so she was a member of that. That's where she got her initial firefighter one certification.
And you still stayed even though?
Yeah. They do something right every now and then.
Right, every now and then, right?
Every now and then. And just to expand on that a little bit more, starting tomorrow night, Kayla, again, doing more training to benefit the fire department herself. And two other members are gonna be going to North Berwick to take an EVAC class, which is Emergency Vehicle Operating Course. We already have, there was a picture here, I think we did like a year and a half ago, with some of the other members. But we want more drivers. And this is in preparation of when the new fire truck arrives at the end of the year. Kayla's been driving an awful lot of equipment now, but I wanted to give her that certification, so that's what. She'll be all ready to go. So if you see a fire truck's running around, that's what they're doing. They're getting their driveway.
Ask your question about that in a moment, buddy.
So they can go do that. Question on that in a moment? Go ahead.
Whenever you're done.
Go right ahead, ask me what you got.
So South Berwick was here on Sunday doing something at the public boat launch or?
They're going to do pump training.
Is that what they're?
Pump some water. That's the best access for any of the fire departments. You'll even see summers there about nine to 10:00 doing it. Usually you can get right to it, it's easy access. But they'll do that for training of their personnel, whether it be recertification or new guys doing it or whatnot. So if you went by there and you saw that, probably they're doing throwing water back in the river, right?
It looked like it. I mean, I didn't have an issue with that. Just if people asked me, you know, why is the South Berwick Fire Department doing something, you know? I could give them an answer.
Just easy access for them as a training spot.
Perfect.
And the other reason why they do a lot of that, we do have a large incident in town somewhere. Our water supply in the community is marginal at best. We had a large incident downtown, we're flowing massive amount of water. One of our contingency plans to that for the supporting of the fire incident, somebody at the boat ran. Pumping water back uptown so we could have another source. Because if we had to flow for hours and hours and hours, we drain the water and, okay? Right down, system is not enough to keep up. So that's one of our contingencies. And guess who's gonna be there if it happens?
Them, Berwick, hopefully. Fair enough.
They know. So that's part of their training regiment, too. So the other thing that I wanted to bring up with you is just kind of an update on what's going on with the new fire truck. We finalized the stats, the specs on it about a week ago. And I remember, I don't know if we had a discussion here, but I think we did, on why our fire trucks are white? Did that ever come into this room that we discussed or try to lighten you on that at all? Because I couldn't find that. I asked every member of the fire department that I know in the headcount way back, from Chief Knowles to further back. Well, Chief Ron Brown, three chiefs ago, finally gave me the information. Kevin actually found it and got it from him. That the reason why they went to white was, and only one reason, to be different. Get away from the non-conditional stuff, so they went to white. Because they had all red fire trucks here back in the early days, and they spent money to paint them white.
Okay.
So, with that being said, the new fire truck is not gonna be white anymore.
You're bucking the system.
I am. I am bucking the system. Kind of a little more of a traditionalist in that regard. But it's also a safety issue. There was numerous times this past winter where we were out on calls during some of those two-foot snowstorms that we had, those three in a row, casting eighteen inches, where engine three was coming back from calls, and we're trying to park it on the ramp. And with every single red light and light on, you could still could hardly see the fire truck, almost immediate. So I'm like, how is that gonna work when we're out in the middle of Route 4 trying to control an incident and you can't even see it? So that's one of the reasons why I wanted to switch over. And then, like you said, the other part would be the traditionalist side. Kind of, so we were discussing it, and we've been, we've done a lot of work with it, and we're looking at a red over white scheme. And one thing is, the new engine is gonna have what's called roll-up doors. Instead of doors that open on a canopy, they're just gonna roll up. So it gives you more space and depth to put the equipment that you need. And in order to save a little bit of money, we weren't gonna paint those doors. So they come a primer gray type color. Which is fine, and that's typically what we do. So we're gonna do red over white, uh, not white over red, white on the top and the bottom. So it was hard to think, doing some research, Deputy Chief Glidden did some work, and so did some of the other members. We came up with a little bit different scheme, and I kinda just wanted to show it to you. So if anybody says anything, or if you see anything, or even if you say, I don't like that, this is typically where we're, where we're gonna head now, is that kind of scheme.
Okay.
A gray over a red. That stripe that shows black will be white. It'll still be white on board. It'll be more of a hockey stick design. So that's where we're headed. It's not 100% cast in stone, but that's probably where we're gonna head.
Okay.
I just wanted you guys to be aware of that, that that's something, it wasn't solely something that I decided. It was a departmental why I can't, I didn't want to.
There's a question that everyone's going to ask me, or ask anyone else on the board, is how much additional cost is it to have that?
About 300 bucks. Of which is nothing gonna change from the prices that we've been talking about already. Do you see that?
Not when we got it every vehicle, we have to add 300 dollars for a paint. Not that it'll be, next time you buy something, it'll both be, you know, maybe, so.
Yeah, next time you go buy something, it won't be 450, it'll be 600 dollars.
Right.
So you can squeeze it in under that, for the time in one needs to be replaced.
I love the positivity that you bring to the conversation.
So the gray, how does that's show up, is that?
Much better. And the thing is, is that's also has a metallic image to it, so it's a little bit.
So it's more reflective.
Yes.
So the vast majority of the truck is red? It's just a little tiny portion of the top?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. And then, like I said, the roll-up doors and that's kind of all ties it in. Well, actually, before we get further down the road, because why I showed you that picture was because they're gonna, we have some paint chips, and it's gonna get sent up to the manufacturer, and they're actually gonna paint a large portion and bring it back. So we have, instead of little paint chip, everybody tries to look at something like that and make a decision. We're gonna have a fairly large size to make our final decisions, for what we want to do on a scheme. But other than that, all the final specs are done. The truck is, within two weeks of them starting to buy chassis and.
Right.
Engine components and start putting together, so that's moving forward. And the other question that I have, and I know we discussed it before, and I see Suzanne is not here, but that was, on the command vehicle. I have some information on that, and I was kind of looking for some direction on what we wanted to do. We've done our due diligence of looking for local vendors. And by the list that we have here, this is all the government grant, state grant stuff.
Yeah.
Their pricing. And there's, the vehicle which we've been looking at is available at Hilltop Chevrolet. Which is, everybody knows that right down the line. And Kevin's gonna go tomorrow and talk to the guy. There's a whole series of paint work and hoops to dump through with these kind of things also. So we're starting that process, but I just wanted to make sure I was a booking card for the horse.
You may be, because we were.
I know you'll wait till there's some money, some money.
Yeah.
Some flow, well, that way.
Want to make sure that we're not, we're not an issue with that.
We're not, we're not going up there to sign a contract. We're not going up there to, to, you know, expend any funds at this time. It's more to make the first contact with the vendor so that we can take care of what paperwork's on his side.
Okay.
And then, because we can start the process, and it's, it's still like a 90-day out process of wanting to get in vehicles. So if we were to do something, we wouldn't see anything, and if all the fire trucks don't arrive. But I did not want to, yeah, I didn't want to wait too, too long, try to start the process, so I was just kind of. I think, I think it was between the three of you when you were all here, is I think it was, why don't we wait more towards summer?
Summer's arrived, almost.
Almost.
Almost. What I would suggest is that you.
You had said wait maybe the first round of tax bills come back or something, or some.
That won't be until.
That's in June.
June. So I was gonna suggest, you might want to wait, come back and have this conversation at our first meeting in June.
All right, yeah, no, that's fine.
Is she back then?
Yeah.
A second weekend.
Okay.
Would be better, I think.
Okay, that's fine. That's why I just wanted to.
Just to be safe.
I wanted us to know what we were. Kevin is still gonna have this conversation with them tomorrow.
Okay.
So we can at least.
I don't think there's a problem having that conversation, but I would worry about.
No purchase orders, nothing, no orders, nothing like that.
Kevin making any sort of commitment at all, so.
No commitment. This is more just start the process. And I just wanted you to make sure you were aware of that, in case for whatever reason somebody goes. Ron, something from Hilltop Chevrolet calling back, say, what's that, Ron? At least you would know that we will be making contact and at least finding out what our procedure has to be to complete that. Okay, all right.
Yeah.
All righty. Anything else for us?
That's all I have. You have anything for me?
I don't think so.
Jody, did you see my?
Oh, we do have something, because you were actually, yes, we do.
Yes, you're.
We're two things, don't we?
The CPR classes?
Yes.
We're gonna look into that? Well, I didn't know what was best for you guys. Is Monday better for you guys? Because that's your training day.
But that's fine. If anything else, if people wanted to come in and do it, we would have more individuals who would help assist in the training.
Oh.
And sometimes it's better to have more people available because you can help almost a one-on-one kind of thing to make sure that people have the proper skills.
Okay, and then.
Sean Glidden is usually the guy that I run all this through. He's been gone last week, and he's gone this week in California doing training for his, for his new position. So the other thing that we can utilize, and since I have one of our individuals, is that Inez can provide some of this, too.
Okay.
So if those are the two dates you're looking for, I know it's a Thursday or Friday.
Well, we only pick those because that's right before when the rec started.
Once it gets going.
So we can do the, and if, can we do the 12th and the 19th, or the 5th and the 12th, or any of those? So.
I'll find out.
Yeah.
I can't commit to anything right now, but you want, what level, I mean, you want CPR?
Uh, just CPR, first aid, just for counselors.
Okay.
So.
Because there's different levels of health providers.
Right, yeah, they don't need that.
There's all kinds of different things that you can get. So you just want that, and then some first aid, you said also.
Right.
Basic first aid class?
Okay. And now, I know my CPR original was like over eight hours, and this shouldn't be, right? Or, or whatever, four hours.
No, you could probably squeeze it into that size if I, that timeframe, sure.
Right now we have six people right now that need it.
These are all like the counselors, the people that are gonna work at summer recs? I would turn it to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the building also needs it as well, so.
Town employees?
If they're, if they're available that day, those days too.
Okay.
So.
Let me just, let me.
Give me two days.
Down a little bit more, yeah. And we'll try to get that coordinated for you.
And is it okay, is it okay with ice rink being back where it is? The skating rink thing, okay.
It is.
Sorry, I said off the, that was, I think it skipped over.
I know, a few Mondays ago, we took that apart, and that's, you know, that was, again, Sean's, a lot of his doing was on that this year. And he asked me, it was fine, they go, I don't have an issue with it sitting right there.
Okay, great.
Because I wanted to use that cement pad. I think the year before, they had it up against the building. Because I wanted to use that cement pad, I think the year before, they had it up against the building.
Mm-hmm.
Sometimes on the grass area, you know, critters and stuff decided they wanted to make that their home.
Right.
And there's a little less of that when it's sitting on it. And it doesn't affect us or anything.
Okay.
So it's fine.
Okay.
Well, that covers that, and there's also an email notification from DES regarding Class B phone. Does that mean anything to you?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Is that covered, though?
Yeah, I'm just enlightening, what that is, is anytime we use phone
Yeah.
for any incident, we need to document and notify DES, because there's some research going on, that particular types of phone are hazardous to the environment.
Okay.
And most fire departments will use phone on a regular basis, whether it be a car fire, sometimes on building fires, to make sure it's completely suppressed. Wild, you know, wildland fires, so now if you are, they wanna know where, what, when, how.
You have that under, under control?
Yep.
Got that covered, perfect. Anything else for the chief?
No.
All right, thank you, and congratulations again, Kealan, thank you for your service.
Good evening.
We will move into town administration. First item we have on here, is town hall available for nonprofit groups? I think that's yours.
Oh, that was, and they meant somewhere else with them.
We're scratching that? I mean, do we, do we wanna discuss it, or?
Um, it was just a softball league, they needed more members, they didn't have to vote community for the night.
Oh, just that night?
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Just in case it happens again. Do we care?
So, you know, well, if you wanna, we, okay, let me do this. We have a library trustee here, I'm gonna ask her a question, she doesn't mind answering. Do you have a written policy down there?
Yes.
Okay, could you send that to us?
Sure.
Okay, that might help us determine whether or not, because there's lots of things we need to think about, who's gonna open the building, cleaning up, that sort of thing. So if we wanna do it, and I don't oppose allowing nonprofit groups to use the building, it's just we don't have a policy on it.
Right.
We know Suzanne's gonna say, "What's the written policy?", so.
Right.
Yeah, and I can just briefly tell you that there's, there's the new community room in the back of the library too, that has enough space for a larger meeting than you'd be able to have here.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if parents come, or if it's the type of thing where you'd have parents and kids, it's just for the board.
Yeah.
Um, but, yeah, and the library, pretty much, any night of the week. You, and you, you just lock up when you're done.
Cool, except for Thursdays, 'cause yoga's on Thursday. Right?
Yoga's in the big room on Thursday, but the Compresto library is empty.
There's a smaller one.
Is something we wanna still consider having, if people wanna be here, do we wanna keep working on this, or we can scratch off a little?
We can scratch off a little, we can.
All right, well, thank you.
Because I told them they could meet at my work.
All right. Legal, review of legal priorities, we're gonna table that till Suzanne gets back, she wanted us to, and I'm happy to comply with that, unless she wants to talk about it. Drainage contract, I believe, we deal with it right now, it's in the folder. Mister, I can't remember what his name was, but Ray Gagnon's son, I can't remember, it could be Ray as well, but, uh, came in, a norm, rather. Came in today to drop some stuff off there. Still believing that they will be able to have everything ready to go by completion by the thirtieth of June, so.
Now, how are they gonna do network while the roof is
We had that conversation as well.
Okay.
Um, they'll start the work that they can do now in the back, and we're hoping, well, it's gonna rain most of the week, so we'll see. They'll, they'll, they believe they can manage it, so, there's enough work, I guess, they can do, so. But they understand that
Mother nature's not implying.
No, not at all. Scratch something off, all right? For sure. All right.
Yeah, okay.
Five twenty-two?
Yeah.
Awesome, all right, so, executed, and they will get started this week. Dog Waste Downtown, I stopped in to see the, we here when you talked about this?
Uh, probably.
Village Vet has offered to give us some signs. I stopped in last Thursday or Friday, there's two vets. Dr. Mike is the one who, I had the conversation, he wasn't there. The other vet, I wouldn't have known what I was talking about, so I was gonna go in today and didn't make it, so that's on me to talk to him again. I'll try again this week. COVID project, so the easements are all completed, it just needs to be sent now over to legal for review. So we're good to go there. Town Hall Drainage, we just, I was talking to her twice. We just did that, executed the contract, so that's good. Transfer Station, Jeff is waiting on, this is my one, my number time. He's awaiting the second bid still. Um, he did, we reached out again last week, and we're still waiting on that. He gave us an update on working with pipe to deal with and retaining more. Copying and scanning, I believe there is some info.
There is a info, but I think we might have to hold off on that for budgetary reasons. So we may have to pull from other funds, because the rec numbers are not lining up right now. So we budgeted a hundred kids, and we have to do one. So I
So we're gonna table copying and scanning then?
I would like to table, I can get the, this, but I don't wanna put anything in right until summer's over.
Yeah, it's a good deal, though, from what I saw, so. Okay, but we, so there's an offer on the table from the same company that's doing the police department, so it seems pretty good, actually.
Yes.
If we can make it work. All right. So we'll table, New Hope Housing Tax Exemption. We're still waiting on Avatar. Caroline reached out again today, we heard back from Avatar. Avatar said they needed some other form, so they're reaching out again to, what is it called? New Hope Housing to get that form, so we're still waiting on Avatar, so we will table, but that's where we stand at the moment. ADA Coordinator, seed email. Well, the Governor's Commission on Disabilities has sent us, every community in the state, a letter or slash email notifying us that we need an ADA coordinator. It would seem that the, the best person to handle that would probably be the building inspector, seeing that he works on all those issues. We forwarded the, we can forward the email on to Mr. Clark and see if that's something he believes he has time for. I don't know what the, how, how intense the duties are, let me see if I can find the email here, we can read it real quick. This could be something that actually requires some time, or it could just be, you have to have someone. Good morning, the New Hampshire Governor, the New Hampshire Governor's Commission on Disability needs to know who the ADA coordinator is for your town. It's not just to us, it's to a number of communities. Federal law states that a public entity that employs fifty or more persons, that's not us, shall designate at least one employer to be an ADA coordinator. Please provide us with that name. Okay, so I think we would let Mr. Conley know from the Governor's Commission that we don't employ fifty people. So we would probably not have to have an ADA coordinator. It's probably a moot point.
Agreed.
All right. Caroline just forwarded the email this afternoon, and I haven't had a chance to read it, so it says, "Read the email", and I did. So we would probably let them know that we don't need one, because we don't have fifty employees. That was an easy one to solve.
Send that to me, Mike?
Forward it to you right now. I'm gonna be either thinking table all night, but we're on table. Okay, Rec Committee, I'll let you take that one.
We met last night, we're meeting again in two weeks, and probably every night from there on in, 'cause now it's getting close to the wire. Um, I have in here to hire Andrew Gray as our camp director. Came with glowing recommendations, he's a football coach to Farmington, teaches special ed at Rochester. Pretty excited to have him on board. So he was very excited to have, he's used to the Rochester rec with three hundred children. So he was pretty excited to hear, with a small number, he's, he's ready to send him to boot camp and start football training. No, I'm kidding, um, no, so we're pretty excited to have him on board.
Okay.
How was his name spelled?
G R A Y.
Andrew Gray, just as
J R A Y.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, somebody was.
Okay, so we're going to the full-time, forty hour per week position?
Correct.
Okay, but it's only somewhat temporary. So you'll be paid at the rate of thirteen dollars per hour. The camp operates Monday through Friday, with the exception for July third and fourth, and since, starting the week of June twenty-sixth, for eight consecutive weeks until August eighteenth. Perfect, all right. Now, we, we're the hiring entity, right, the select board, so do you wanna make a motion then, or?
Motion except, Andrew Gray accepted our proposal for summers worth, a role counselor for Camp Raleigh, for thirteen dollars an hour for the summer of two thousand seventeen.
So the motion is to offer the summer, the summer rec directorship to Andrew Gray?
Yeah.
For the amount of thirteen dollars an hour for eight weeks, for forty hours a week, I'll second. Okay.
Sorry.
No, it's okay, I just wanna make sure that, I know what you're saying, but I wanna make sure of that. That's how I got it. Okay, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I don't I have so much to break and read it, I was like, for once. All right, anything else for a rec? What is it, you have fifty-one kids, you're hoping for a hundred?
We have fifty-one kids, we budgeted for about a hundred, hundred and ten.
Okay.
It's an even number of kids, though, it's nineteen in the first through third grade, fourteen in another group, and thirteen in another group or something, it's very evenly numbered.
Nineteen in first through third, and then, um, four or five is fourteen.
Yeah.
And then eleven, sixth through eighth graders. And the difference between male and females is two or three. There's something like twenty-one males and twenty-three females, or something like that, it's very close.
It's a good mix, good.
And, um, so, there's a good mix of counselors too.
Yeah, we have five, four above the age of eighteen, and two below. We have six total right now, so.
Sure.
Because we asked for a fifty-one percent ratio.
All right, anything else for summer rec, or rec in general, sorry? We've got the
No, summer is taking over rec for right now.
Yeah, perfect, all right.
We did talk about
You did winter too, you did the pool, so you've covered that, that didn't hear, okay, so.
So, um, we did talk about dog waste downtown, and if they wanted to take that on. Um, we decided we will discuss that after summer starts.
I, I can, I can appreciate that. There are more pressing issues for you guys, I get that completely. All right, so, but nothing else, what we want? Uh, Jay, Select Board Assistance Thursdays through July, there was an email that went out yesterday, or today, I saw.
Yeah.
Saying the town hall is gonna be closed on, the select board also would be closed on Thursdays. So I asked, it's actually not. It wasn't actually accurate. She'll be, she'll be here during the day, if not at night.
She'll be here alone?
Yeah, the, the building won't be open, she's still working, so she's still working her thirty-two hours. She's, um, had another, um, course that she's taking on Thursday evenings, that we, we've discussed
Okay.
previously as a board, so.
Yes.
It's just starting now, so she does what's happening, so. Um, so anyone, everyone knows that she's actually working, not taking Thursdays off through the summer, so. All right, so hydro sale of, or of lease? Doesn't seem to make sense to me. There was a letter last week, oh, that we received, that we wanna refer to legal, but I thought we wanted to wait till you got here. Um, the transfers, the E N L, who operates transfer station, is, is, is bought out.
I saw that.
So we wanna make sure there's no, any kind of implications for us. You know, we hold a license, but they are our operator, as we're going through the relicenter, so we wanted to just maybe to refer this to, to legal, so.
And the new company's gonna take over the relicensing process?
I will, we will talk, so, so, okay. Is there any sticky over there, my chance? All right. And historical pretty non-lapsing council committee has not met about that at all. Although, the auditor was in, talking about something else, so the question came up as to what to do about that sort of issue. And he suggested, Mr. Dumas, Dumea, rather, suggested that the best thing to do is to set up a non-lapsing fund to re-attend meeting, like we do for other things.
Okay.
Um, that way, there's the proper accounting, so I will bring that information back to historical pretty next time we meet. So, that's that. Can about closing schedule, do we want to wait for Suzanne? She had suggested before she left that it could, that there was no issue waiting the couple weeks till she got back. If you're comfortable with that, or we can move forward, whether if you want.
I'm fine to move forward, but I assume she would like to be here, so.
I'm, I'm okay with that, if you want.
Yeah.
You can go on a table, that's fine. I didn't wanna hold it up if we didn't need to, but if she wants to wait, I'm happy to wait. What do we got here? Policies and procedures, welfare, that's, um
I didn't see anything before.
Okay, so we're not, there's nothing to discuss tonight, right?
No.
Okay, so we'll table that. All right, I think I'm missing a note, gotta go talk about it. Town administration, board member activities and updates. And do you have
I was just said it being last night, and I'll be in next week.
And you're meaning again, next week, you said, is that coming sometime?
Uh, not next week, the week after.
Oh, wow, okay.
Somewhere around the border, aren't they?
Yes.
You've had, made great progress.
So the four
Got a director now?
Yes.
That's great. That's great.
They're doing great.
So, so the Police Space Needs Committee met last Thursday, and we did a tour of the, of the three proposed sites that we, we'll get talked to after in our strategic planning, uh, meeting. The Silver Street location, where the old Highway Shed is. The Rollins Road, where Porter Store was a number of years ago, across from Greenview Drive.
Yeah.
And the Turcot Field, we took a hike out there. And the, the general consensus was that the Turcot Field, although as lovely as it is, it is truly a lovely space, it's not really the best option.
Right.
Considering how much road you have to put in to get there. There's still some interest, though, in the, the old Porter Store location. I was asked to, to get some information about, you know, the cost, the size, all of that. So I've got that information to bring back to, to the, to the committee, it's a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, but three point eight five eight, there's some. Certainly have a conversation about that. There are some wet spots, but, um, you know, anyways. And then Silver Street, um, the chief sent out a survey to, to neighbors on, on Silver Street. I think it's all the way down to Cricket Lane, and then up, and all of Silver Lane. So we'll see what people think about having it located there when they answer their surveys. It's, um, the size of the building was, was staked out, so we could sort of get an idea, and it's, in my humble opinion, there's plenty of room there for that. Now, is there enough room to do expansion? Maybe, maybe not, so, um, there was some conversation about, well, whether, what, would it make sense to, just do it all at once? Um, because you wouldn't, it wouldn't be practical to put a second or third floor on once it's been built, because of the type of design that we're looking at. Although we haven't finalized that yet either, but, um, it was a good meeting. There were a lot of good questions, we're gonna meet again on the fifteenth, I believe. Yeah, here, on the fifteenth, so. Uh, June fifteenth. I was gonna say, we're not going back in time, not for that, of course. Uh, and the planning board has a number of issues coming before it, um, the first week in June, but we won't be meeting before that, so I'll tell you about them now. There's one, actually, there's only one, one's going to the Z B A first, so. But there are two proposed self-storage facilities, um, here in town. One off Greenview Drive. One of Greenview Drive, which is industrial, commercial, seems to make a little more sense. And then there's one proposed off of Oak Street that we need to go to the ZBA first to get a waiver. And I will not say anything about that because it hasn't, hasn't happened, so. But that will be happening the first week. The ZBA is meeting, I think, May twenty-fifth, when they're supposed to. Let's see if that actually happens, I don't know. And that's what happened in my world anyways. And if there's no other updates, we're going to move on to building permits. And the first one I have is building permit twenty seventeen zero four eight four two six Third Street. They're replacing their roof. Mr. Clark has reviewed it, a hundred dollar fee. Oh, the next one is twenty seventeen dash zero five one forty Jesse Doe Road. It's American Tower Corporation. I'll just read what it says. On behalf of T-Mobile, the proposed work involves swapping out three antennas and replacing them with three new antennas. Mr. Clark has reviewed it. It's a hundred and seventy-five dollar fee. Pit workers here to want to see it. This happens from time to time, so. And I don't think it happened last year, but it happens. Not infrequently. Actually, I missed your stamp too, but let me do this one first. We have a change of occupancy for six four nine through six five five Main Street. The building directly to our left, it has been completely rehabbed. I actually had the opportunity to go in there and have a tour of it today. A gentleman that is, that's doing the work is very eager for people to see it, actually. He and his wife both were there. And to say that it's an amazing, to say it's an amazing transformation is really understated. I mean, it's just, it's absolutely gorgeous in there. And he, they both really want to see the project succeed, but they also want to make sure that it's sort of a gem. And we thank them for it. And they're hoping to do more projects in town. And given the level of work they did in there, I hope they do find some properties to buy. We have one, one, probably for several of us.
That's okay.
One.
Forty-one Rollins Road, subject design. Wait. I thought you guys.
That's the Spanish street. I knew it was gonna happen, because God was there for a whole day.
He brought in, there was only one cover sheet, but he liked to stamp all three copies, if you don't mind.
I, everything in my path is stamped, because I'd rather be safe than sorry.
Right. Yes, he was in for quite a while when I was, Friday Sunday, explaining to us in great detail what they're gonna do. To which I said, I just need the cover sheet. I don't, I don't review them personally, sir. But he was very proud of the level of work they were doing.
More than subject?
No, it was just a very simple fix on the subject tank at Elrod.
Okay.
Just, there was some tree root issues, I guess. They have solved the issue apparently. But his car is there if you want to call him. He will explain it all to you if you want to hear it. He was very nice, very nice. Hmm, apparently is.
Thank you, it's here?
Let's just say. I have two purchase orders here. Just to save the time, I'll just do it. The first is purchase order number one two seven four, made out to Digital Inc. It's for our yearly order of the window envelopes and town clerk report to treasurer books. The little, the receipts that go back and forth to the treasurer and the clerk. For a grand total of four hundred twenty-three dollars and ninety-three cents.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, are you saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. We're gonna have envelopes. Next is Northeast Records, purchase order number one two seven five, sorry. It's for the mobile shredding truck that comes, that we do yearly apparently. It says yearly purge of documents needing shredding for the police department, the town clerk and the administrative office. For grand total of two hundred dollars.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye, opposed?
Oh, aye.
You have to say something tonight, definitely. We won't pass anything. All right. That's all that I have in this folder.
We have a letter to Mr. Brunel from Prospect.
Yep, so last week we, we received a letter to Mr. Brunel regarding his, his post there on Prospect Street. And we needed a little word smothering, so we did that. We also added, when he came before us, he had mentioned the police report. And so we, we mentioned during your last visit to the select board, you would reference the police report filed regarding the damage to your post. In close, please find a copy of that report, which does not indicate that the damage was done by the plow. We apologize for the frustration in, in communities this has caused me, so. I practically just read the whole letter, sorry. This letter is a follow-up to your visit to the select board on May eighth. We understand that you believe the right of way on Prospect Street may have changed at some point. Unfortunately, we have no record of this at this town, at that town, this at the town office. You may indeed be correct. However, under such circumstances, the burden of proof is on the property owner. If you should, if you should find reference to a public town document or a letter which you may have received to that effect and which may prove what you believe, we will be happy to consider that. Until that time, we will consider the matter closed. And I just read through the other part, so. If we're good, we'll send it off to him.
Please go.
I wanted to try to find something that said, until that time, we will consider the matter closed. We didn't really accomplish anything nicer than that, so. It seemed appropriate still, so. And we'll send the option, the option Mr. Brunel.
And we got a magazine from Breathing Matters. Purchase order for, to B and B Printing for the newsletter. Purchase order one two one two, I know the quote, for B and B Printing for twelve hundred copies of the newsletter for a hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Second. Any discussion? I will say that I saw the, the advanced coffee, that looks really good, actually. I know Mark Kuchar, oh, not Mark Kuchar, Ed Sherbenteer was very excited. I saw him on Sunday for the mention about his, his relatives at health class and trees. Down the park, so. Anyways. Want to try to see before we go? It looks really good, it looks the same as ever to me, so. All right, so all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? All right. All right, that's that. We thank you for doing your time.
And a letter from DDS.
I know, it's true, aren't I so lucky for coming in today? Yeah, going to sort of talk about it, it'll be quicker if you don't mind. So you'll recall, this is a certified letter from the Department of Environmental Service. You'll recall a while back, we received notice that we needed to file our transfer station slash recycling center report. It's still being compiled. This is a reminder that we still need to file it. There's no late fees or anything, penalties or anything like that. The, the thing that's holding them up, is the form changed apparently and it's a? Some of the questions aren't as intuitive and as easy to find the answers to apparently as it was in the past for the way it's phrased. So they're parsing out some of that information, but Caroline is working with Jeff. I think some, you were helping too. She said.
Oh, yes.
So you can, you can, you can.
I can't, I, I have no idea what they want.
Okay, well, it's being worked on, so like I said, we've got it under control, but the state has sent us another letter saying we need to do this. They're working on it, so. Feel free to, to rethrow it, so.
No.
Yeah.
No, no.
We know we need to fix it, finish it.
Yes. The other thing that are in here are previously from before, the Comcast and the roads that they're going to be paving with Summer of D O T comes through, so. And that is it.
All right. Do we have anything else we need to talk about?
That was it, no.
All right, I don't have anything else on my notes. So community input.
Where's the three point eight acre Porter Store property?
Corner of Rollins Road and Summersworth Road. And Peas Lane and Greenview, so it's not right on the corner, so that's all that.
Oh, the, the flat piece next to the barns?
Yes. Used to be a convenience store there a long time ago. And gas pumps, right?
And how did the chief, how did the chief distribute this survey?
Via mail. Actual mail.
Do you know?
He mailed them either today.
Oh, okay.
He just gave, he just bought the stamps. We gave him permission to buy the stamps tonight, so. I don't know if he actually bought them already today or if he's buying them today, tomorrow probably, but they're going out.
Because I'm, I live.
You will be, you will be getting.
I live quarters down, so I just want to know how.
It's going all the way down to Cricket Lane.
Great, thank you.
On your side. And obviously down to the, the overpass the other way and all the way down Silver Lane too.
And that's a state road? Would any, would anything that we do impact our ability to have sidewalks on that street once the police station is there?
I don't think so. Because we wouldn't be very, very, very early stages of, of, of any kind of planning and conversations. But the, the building would be set back far enough where there wouldn't be, even the parking, I don't think, would still be plenty of space.
Well, I'm just curious about like, if that's going to be part of the, you know, like, we're gonna.
With a plan to put inside.
Move some community piece of something there. I mean, that street, that street is a death trap now.
It would be a much different conversation with D O T, you know. It's not part of the, well, I shouldn't say that. We haven't, we haven't devised a plan yet, but it has not been part of the conversation, putting in sidewalks, yeah. But that may be something the chief suggests that if we're putting the building there, does it make sense to? Because there are some by the overpass, right? But they just end right there, they're, they're not, they don't go any further down. I remember Harry's father, Harry Knowles's father, asking me for years to get sidewalks back. When I was on the legislature, I said, Mr. Knowles, the Department of Transportation wouldn't do it because the town would have to pay for it. I don't know. This, so it's not the first time.
All I'm asking is, is it possible for us to do it on a state road if we chose to? That's the question.
The answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
That much I know. Does, is there a will or, or means? Perhaps not, but, but you can, yes, that much I know.
Okay.
Oh, look at you, you're like, what am I doing? All right, Celia.
If you had talked about expansion of the police station on the Silver Street lot, if you go there. And that the building you're looking at may not be feasible for upward growth and that it would be, maybe difficult to go outward. Is that something that you plan to talk to the committee about down the road?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Maybe getting a building that's more feasible for growth upward or whatever?
Definitely.
Okay. And do you take?
I mean, nothing has been decided, it's just, this is.
We only have two meetings.
We've only two meetings, right? And the one thing we've decided, I will tell you all.
It's like more meetings.
Is that, yeah, that there will be more meetings, that we will not meet the, the chief wanted a month, everything done in a month, it's not going to be feasible. And he understands that, so.
And.
That's the only thing that's been decided.
Do you take public comment in these meetings or is it just the?
We will, I mean, we haven't yet, I mean.
Okay.
But as we get further down the road, of course, almost definitely.
Okay.
We haven't, there's nothing to really comment on yet. I mean, we haven't really presented it yet.
I hear you getting input from like the people in the neighborhood, right? The most ideal locations would be, but.
Yeah.
That, like, I live now in the neighborhood where it currently is and I don't want to see it move too far and I want to be able to express my opinions.
I hear you.
And then has the discussion come up of whether it's going to be joint town officials moving with it? Or is it just going to be the police department?
Well, we were charged with dealing with the police aspect. I mean, that, that has creeped into the conversation because it's sort of natural. And it sort of did a little bit at our strategic planning meeting to a certain degree. So we don't have any definite plans one way or another. I mean, there have been, there's a company out of Rochester that built the.
The Grumman.
The Grumman, yeah. Construction company that built the Farmington Police Station. So they have given us some specs, but they saw it, actually, when they saw an article in the paper. But we, I mean, they're not committing to go with them or even to go with that type of design. If you're asking one individual, it seems like a pretty good design, but there's no decisions been made yet. But if we were to go that route, there is a possibility of incorporating both going up. I mean, there's also a possibility of going out, depending on where you move to. The design that they've given us right now, if we didn't add on at the beginning phase, it wouldn't be economically. It wouldn't, it wouldn't make much sense economically to, to, to put on a second or third story afterwards because of the way it's framed. I mean, it would, it wouldn't make any sense. You'd be much better off to do it at the beginning. But there's no, one, there's no consensus whether or not we want to do that or, and there's no design, so. But it's, as we, as the ideas sort of get teased out and parsed out, I think it's a natural part of the conversation at least to talk about it, so. But no decisions at all have been, have been made. But we did talk about onsite, you know, would it make sense to go up or could you go out? And, and all those meetings are open to the public, so if you, if you wanted to trample on Scoville Road in the mud with us to look at the Turcot Field, you're welcome.
Unfortunately, that idea's hard.
Well, no, I'm not, sorry to say, you should have been, I'm just saying, but if you want to come, I'm not trying to make you feel bad because you weren't there. I'm just saying, if you want to come to any of those, they're always, every meeting is open to public, so.
I will try in the future.
If you want to be going field trip, you're welcome, if you come, so that was my point.
A reminder that I know that both, a few people in the room have ordered t-shirts, but the Camp Raleigh t-shirt order is closed this week. They will be in the week before Father's Day. And that has given a little extra money to the budget for my committee.
And I am saying our checks were part of the cash. You and I had outstanding checks for t-shirts.
Oh, yes, yes.
I didn't even realize, I thought it had been, but it wasn't.
Scott does the book, so I have no idea. So if he asks me, I'm like, I don't know.
Yeah, I got that update today. Anything else for the public? Going once, going twice, going three times?
We'll adjourn.
By consensus, we shall adjourn at eight o'clock.
Eight oh six.
Eight oh six, is my watch slow too? Eight oh two. Let's cut the difference.